For the City of Granbury will now come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, August the 14th, 2023, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. The first item on agenda tonight, let's see, public hearings, everything we have is public. Do we have any? Kira, none of, all of these are public hearings, no? Consider their request if I don't apply, that's not.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so we don't have anything, be public comments on non-public hearing items because they'll all be public hearings, correct?
Correct.
All right. Consent agenda? We have no minutes?
We have no minutes. We had technical issues and have not.
Some issues with the minutes, okay. We'll have them next month, I take it? All right, so we'll move right on into the public hearing for D1. Consider request of Vaquero Acton Highway Partners LP to final plat a 1.403 acre tract of the Joshua Minette survey. Abstract number 352 as lots one, block one of the Vaquero Acton place. The property is addressed as 5642 Acton Highway. Kira?
Thank you. This location, site location is shown in the outline of the yellow shown there on the map. It's about 600 feet west of the intersection of FM4 and Fall Creek Highway, about one acre in size. The history of this is it was preliminary platted in December of 2021 and the overall preliminary plat is shown in the teal outline. And this purpose is for the final plat of this one portion of the preliminary plat, which can be done. This shows the zoning, it is aligned with the light commercial zoning district and that's also outlined in yellow on this map. Light commercial district is shown in pink. Applicant's application, this is the, the final plat drawing, shows all the dedications and requirement, required notes of a standard plat. It meets the, the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, has easements that connect for traffic circulation as well as drainage and connections to abutting properties as well as the, the street. FIA was not required as, as indicated in your report. This sheet is the requirements sheet from the, the PIP and it lists all the types of items that could be an FIA and, and none were required. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat and these are your voting options for the final plat. I'd be happy to answer any questions. One thing I, I should add is that this has also been scheduled for City Council tomorrow night. There's, there's been some consideration to move it forward, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Is applicant here or applicant representative? If so, would you like to speak?
Steve Reed and I am here for Vaquero, the applicant. I really don't have anything to add other than what Kira has already presented. I'm glad to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for the applicant's representative? Any questions for staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the final plat request, please.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, Mr., I didn't look that way, was that Mr. Class? Was that?
Mr. Erdman.
Mr. Erdman, sorry, it sounded like it was coming from over here. Did you do it, Earl?
Yes.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Erdman to approve the final plat is presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Class, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second item on agenda tonight is a consider request of Corridor 51 LLC to final plat, a 6.231 acre tract of the Myland County School Land Survey, abstract number 348 as lots one through four, block one over the Corridor 51 Business Center. The property is addressed as 1109, 1117, and 1211 Weatherford Highway. Kira?
This is the location map. This site is there on Weatherford Highway, it's shown in teal. All three of those tracks are included in the proposed final plat. The plat history is that it was preliminary platted in January of 2022 and has come forward now for this final plat. The zoning is heavy commercial and plat is meeting the standards and requirements of the zoning district, plat application. There's variance requested to not improved Highway 51 to an urban standard. The city engineer has reviewed that variance proposal and, and supports the variance proposal. Staff aligns with the city engineer on that support. So there's a, the variance memo from the city engineer supporting the variance. This is the drawing showing the final plat with all the required elements on it. The circulation on the property is through access easements, abutting to the various lots. There are four lots in the final plat. There's also drainage provided as would be standard with such a development proposal. And three lots front onto Weatherford Highway. One lot would have access to the street through easements as well as a, what we call a handle of a pan for that lot. Staff's recommending again approval of the variance and also approval of the final plat. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing. Is this the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, we have technology issues tonight, so if you could turn your microwave on when you start and then turn it off when you get done, I'd appreciate it, sir.
Very good. Tony Callaway, I'm the owner of the Corridor 51 Development. My office is 301 South Morgan. We've been working with staff quite some time through a variety of issues and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Kira or staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the requested variance first, please.
Chair, I move to approve the variance as presented.
You have a motion by Mr. Haves, I can't talk to him. Mr. Haves to approve the, a variance as presented tonight, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now, Commissioner, if I'll entertain a motion on the request for the final plat.
Chair, I'll move to approve the final plat.
Have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the final plat as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on tonight to D3. Consider request of Stacy Watkins Martin to one, amend the future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan on part of Lot 2 and part of Lot 4, Block 167 of the Thrash Edition from low-density residential to retail slash office. And two, rezone part of Lot 2 and part of Lot 4, Block 167 of the Thrash Edition from residential 10,000 R10 to light commercial LC. The property is located at 1,001 West Pearl Street. Kira?
Thank you. So your first slide here shows the site location there at 101, 1001 West Pearl Street. It's outlined on blue on the aerial map. The neighborhood context is, is a mix of different uses. To the north is a short-term rental that's on Pearl Street and on the corner there at Lancaster. And then to the east of that is, is commercial and offices as well as on the south side of Pearl. To the west of this property is a nail salon, which would be a commercial type of use as well as other commercial uses. So when you, when you look to what improvements or what development is existing along Lancaster, first along Lancaster to the east of the site is an existing office building that then follow, is followed south by two single-family residential homes. And to the south is residential and then to the west is unimproved land. The site size is about eight tenths of an acre and the site is platted. It's improved with an existing single-family dwelling or residence structure that's been vacant for some time. I think if you've been by it, you would notice that it's been boarded up. And there's also a detached garage structure on the, on the property just right there next to the house. The south portion of the site is, is unimproved. So this is a future land use map. We have that pea-yellow kind of color is indicating low-density residential use and that's single-family type of, of residential detached homes. And the proposed is the reddish color there on the map, the retail office designation. Retail office designation would be for exactly what it says, retail and office uses, the corresponding zoning for some other uses like restaurants, minor auto repair, things that usually occur indoors. And let's go on to the next slide. This slide is taken from information provided in your staff report and this is out of the comprehensive plan. It describes what low-density residential means. It is a detached residential product with lot size ranging from seven to 12,000 square feet typically. And then this also is taken out of the comprehensive plan and it describes what is the retail office designation. Retail office is, is like I stated when we were looking at that map, pretty much what the, the title says. It offers locations for retail trade as well as offices and uses that are similar and yet with all indoor activities. The future land use plan has a section that, that asks certain questions for decision-making of the, any land use plan amendment. And in this situation, the answers that staff has for these proposed amendments include that, you know, this site is, is currently unused. It has a, a building on it, but it seems to be unused primarily because as we get to the zoning map, you'll see that it's split zoned. And it seems that, that it's not used for commercial because it's built as a home, whereas the zoning on that, where the home and the garage are located on the site are zoned for light commercial purposes, whereas the back of the property is, is zoned for residential. So it's split. And when we have it, it's, it's hard to, to make a discernment of, of what something like that should be because you'd have to make a reuse or demolish and build new rather than use, you know, the existing building. You could reuse it, repurpose it, or rebuild. So in consideration of the future land use amendment, the proposal would activate a, a property that's currently underutilized, it's not being used today. The prior use of the site was for a single-family residence, would require commercial conversion through building permitting review. There is infrastructure to serve the, this site, it's existing. The proposed retail office designation would support zoning the property to commercial uses and it is on the frontage of a major street and a side street there, it's, it's on a corner. The proposal could contribute to the enhancement of the community's economic stability goals and objectives. And based on the retail office land use descriptions, typically these are located abutting to residential development. So a retail office is not unusual to find it near or adjacent to residential uses. Nearby uses are similar to the proposed land use designation. And finally, the proposed retail office designation would offer additional property for the community's commercial office land use inventory. Now we'll move on to the zoning part. And I explained this as, as I was discussing the future land use plan. This shows on the map, the teal site is, teal outline is the subject property. The pink color shows light commercial. So the applicant in their zoning request is proposing light commercial zoning on the bottom portion or the south, about a third of the property, to make the property fully or wholly light commercial. So what would, what would happen then is if the existing building were to remain, it would become non-conforming to the street-side setback. So that's the, the side street there along Lancaster. This happens sometimes when properties are zoned. It, it's, it's not necessarily unusual, it does happen sometimes. In order to comp, provide some compatibility to the single-family residential in the area, the zoning ordinance requires a six to eight-foot screening. That's a, a board-on-board wall. There's a requirement also to install masonry pillars every 25 feet along that screening wall where the property abuts to residential districts. So in this case, that would be along the south property line. That's where that, that abutting district is. There's an intervening street along the east side where the yellow is on the map and so the ordinance requires it along where the, the property's abut. And also, there's a requirement for a 20-foot buffer where the commercial district abuts to the, the residential district. So in that 20-foot buffer, what can, can be put there is landscaping, not any buildings, not any parking, not any storage or other types of activity. And the zoning ordinance, there are considerations to be made for evaluating a zoning proposal. And in evaluation of those, staff makes these statements, the, the use of the district appears that it could be appropriate and could contribute to the well-being of the community. The proposal would facilitate a new use in an existing building. There's no evidence of any increased demands on the public. The increased commercial area would be approximately 2,000 square feet. That's an estimate based on information provided in the application content. It would add to the inventory of light commercial district. And negative effects are not anticipated on other areas. There's a finding that didn't apply in this situation and in advisory in this section that if the planning and zoning denies a zoning request, it may offer reasons to the applicant for their denial. We went over this, but I, I like this, this chart. It, it summarizes all the information that has been provided. It gives you an idea about compatibility and how our staff analysis was put together. It's just a helpful tool in, in your report. Regarding public notices, these were required to be sent and on July 27th, we mailed out 22 public notices to the owners of, of property. We also published on July 22nd in the Hood County News, we didn't receive any letters either in favor nor in opposition of the proposal. Staff is recommending approval of both this comprehensive plan amendment as well as the change of zoning. And these are your voting options for both proposals. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak? And again, if you'll please turn the microphone on when you start, we'll see the red light. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Watkins Martin. Thank you for your consideration. In rezoning this, I really think it'll definitely help the economic impact of our city. I'd like to turn it into either office space or office space gallery space for artists to be able to flourish and work there in that space. So, and if you see the building right now, it's in, it's not, it's an eyesore to our city, so it would definitely improve on Pearl Street.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Just one second if you would. Anybody have questions for the applicant while she's up there? Okay, you're good, thanks. Okay. Any questions for staff? And I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion first on the, to amend, the request to amend the future land use map.
Chair, I'll move to approve the amendment to the future land use map.
Have a motion to approve the future land use, use map amendment by Mr. Haves and a second by Mr. Overdeer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, Commissioner, entertain a, a motion on the rezoning request, please.
Motion for approval of the change of zoning as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Hallman and have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haves. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next item on agenda is D4. Consider request of Jerry Moore to one, amend the future land use plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan on a 2.17 acre tract of the WG Terrell survey, abstract number 562 from retail office to commercial. And two, rezone a 2.17 acre tract of the WS Terrell survey, abstract number 562, from light commercial to heavy commercial. The property is addressed as 4426 East Highway 377. Kira?
Thank you. So we'll move to our site context slide. The blackout line on this slide shows the site location there on Highway 377. And the context for this site, there are vacant and undeveloped properties to the north. To the east is an automobile repair facility along the property's south boundary is a facility that sells propane and gas. And to the east is retail office and I think that, you know, to the east is the equipment sales and rental. I think you're familiar with Highway 377. It is an area that offers a wide variety of uses to the community in terms of commercial office and, and other similar related uses. This is the future land use plan map. The existing land use designation is retail office, whereas the proposed is commercial. So the red on that map shows the retail office and the kind of brownish red there to the south of 377 is commercial. If we, if we were to be able to zoom out on this map, you would notice that most of the commercial designation happens and occurs on the south side of 377, whereas the retail office designation is on the north side. We went over this in the, the previous application. Retail office offers uses for retail sales and office, indoor typically activities, minor automobile repair and restaurants are some types of uses. Retail can be located on high-traffic and high-volume streets. For the commercial use, a little heavier uses are, are characteristic in the commercial uses that might have outdoor activities, outdoor storage, some building supplies with outdoor storage might be an example. And we see these along Highway 377 as well. Regarding the administration of the, the future land use plan, these are the, the questions that prepare the analysis and staff has provided answers in our staff report. The property is currently undeveloped and is proposed for new development. It would contribute and enhance the community and the surrounding area. The site fronts on 377 and has infrastructure services in place. The proposed commercial designation would support zoning of the property more broadly compared to the existing retail office designation. The proposal contributes to the enhancement of the community's economic stability, offering a wider variety of uses. The commercial land use descriptions are for sites with frontage onto major highways and are appropriate locations for commercial designation. Where properties are near residential, then there should be some mitigation of any impacts that the use that comes to the site may have. Uses to the east and west again are characteristically commercial types, so the propane gas sales and the heavy auto repair that's adjacent to the property, those existing uses are characteristic of, of land use type of commercial. The proposed use would add to the variety of commercial land uses available. So let's move to the zoning evaluation now. So this map shows the existing light commercial zoning in pink. It's, it's not obvious why the heavier uses are not yet zoned heavy commercial. It may have been that those were zoned and, and not changed and they are non-conforming uses. The proposed use would be heavy commercial, which is a darker red color that you would find on a zoning map. And let's see, to the north, I should mention, is currently zoned for duplex use. And with the heavy commercial zoning, again, as with the previous case, commercial development requires the installation of a six-to-eight-foot board-on-board fence with pillars every 25 feet, those are masonry pillars. And it also requires a 20-foot setback, a landscape setback buffer between any activities such as parking or buildings and that has to be landscaped. So that's how the, the buffering performs in the zoning ordinance to separate residential and commercial properties. Our ordinance has sections 2, 3D for considerations of a zone change. The analysis of the, the future land use plan and the proposed change, zoning districts and site context of the proposal indicate that the proposal would be appropriate and contribute to the well-being of the community. It would facilitate a new use on a property that has frontage on a major highway and has infrastructure available. This project doesn't appear to have any uncharacteristic or undesirable impacts and it adds to the inventory of heavy commercial districts. It expands the uses that would otherwise not be available to, in the existing light commercial district. It's not anticipated that the other areas would be negatively affected. And again, this is, this is that kind of evaluation chart, covers most what we've already gone through. Public notice was provided with letters mailed out on July 27th to 12 owners of property and also on July 22nd, published in the Hood County News. We've not received any responses in terms of letters received in favor nor in opposition to the request. And staff is recommending approval of both of the applications. This slide will show you your voting options and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kira. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak?
Yes. Okay.
Hello, my name is Jerry Moore. I'm the owner of the 4426, uh, west, or E7, 377. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, Chris Kaufman. I just wanted to ask, what does it mean indoor entertainment venue? That's all I got to ask.
Basically, the, what I'm proposing, the project I'm proposing to do is basically a restaurant slash bar and grill. I'd like to add some gaming, basically for, like a Dave and Buster's for example, where you have arcade games for kids, different types of billiards, shuffleboard, air hockey, things of that nature. So when they come to the restaurant to watch the game or things like that with their family, they can have some entertainment options as well.
Based on that, why do we need heavy commercial for a restaurant? Kira?
It's, it's, a restaurant is allowed in the light commercial. It's the additional activities of the, the game center that, that push it into a heavy commercial district.
Even if it's all inside?
Correct.
So my understanding is, okay, so we're rezoning, but the, is it, I don't think it's tied to Mr. Moore, correct? Sorry, I don't seem like it's yelling. We're rezoning, but it's not tied to what he wants to do there, correct?
Correct.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Correct. He could elect to develop any of the uses that would be a heavy commercial use.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, that's all for now. We do have a speaker card. Speaker, Mr. Baloo?
Hi, I'm Dr. Saleem Baloo. I own the property at 4425 East US 377 across the street. I was out of the country and I just received a letter yesterday, so my, I guess, I'm a doctor, I know nothing about city planning whatsoever, and the nice ladies in community planning educated me on light versus heavy commercial just prior to this being so appreciative to them. My, my main concern or question would be... My main concern or question would be, currently, across the street, there's Daisy Road. Daisy Road is the main thoroughfare for the entire neighborhood behind, and what I tend to see out of my window almost on a daily basis from a traffic flow is accidents and just backup. So, you know, whatever, again, I don't know anything about city planning whatsoever, but at least wanted to give my thoughts on whatever venue or whatever comes up in there that that takes into consideration, whether a traffic light or something, because it tends to be a mess there pretty much on a daily basis.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the Future Land Use Plan Amendment.
Chair, I'll move to approve the amendment to the Future Land Use Map.
We have a motion by Mr. Haves to approve the requested amendment to the Future Land Use Map. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hallman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second request to vote on this item is the rezoning request. Do I have a motion to, on the rezoning request?
I'll make a motion for approval of the change of zoning as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Hallman to approve the rezoning request as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kira, I believe you have something you want to go over with us before we adjourn, please.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let you know, we'll be sending out an email tomorrow. There is a planning and zoning workshop August 30 and 31st, put on by the North Central Texas Council of Governments in Arlington. This would contribute to training and your expertise in this field as planning commissioners. So, would encourage you to review that and if you can, consider to attend. Whoever responds that they want to, we'll put that together for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think that's all tonight, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.